Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. We're waiting for Councilmember Krikorian. Councilmember Parks is in Employee Relations. We don't anticipate he'll be here. But let's move forward. So item number one.
Item number one is a motion, Alarcon Parks, directing the CLA to report on ways that jurisdictions similar to Los Angeles applied for and administered funds in connection with the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chris Concepcion with the CLA's office. The motion, Alarcon Parks, dated January 29th, 2010, which was referred to the Ad Hoc Committee on Economic Recovery and Reinvestment, and was later referred to this committee on Wednesday, February 3rd of this year, requests that our office report to this committee in 30 days on specific ways that jurisdictions similar to Los Angeles applied for and administered ARA grant funds. And also, the motion requests our office to explain how the City of Los Angeles can improve its ARA application and administrative processes to create the jobs needed at this time. Our office is specifically here to receive additional direction prior to preparing the written reports, but we also wanted to review for the public the intended purposes of the Recovery Act, as well as discuss with you some preliminary findings based on some information provided from select cities. So to review the intended purposes as detailed in the text of the Recovery Act, the first intended purpose is to preserve and create jobs and promote economic recovery. The second intended purpose is to assist those most impacted by the recession. The third intended purpose is to provide investments needed to increase economic efficiency by spurring technological advances in science and health. The fourth is to invest in transportation, environmental protection, and other infrastructure that will provide long-term economic benefits. And the fifth is to stabilize state and local government budgets in order to minimize and avoid reductions in essential services and counterproductive state and local tax increases. It appears from our preliminary research that cities have placed more emphasis on one or two as opposed to all of the intended purposes of the Recovery Act. Much of this can be attributed to the varying structures of city government. Although cities such as New York and Chicago created more jobs in areas that the City of LA does not currently have jurisdiction such as health services, social services, and education, there are ways to maximize job creation and retention, given the existing opportunities for which the City of Los Angeles may apply. What we have also found preliminarily between cities who have substantial job numbers is that the similarity in policy directions have driven the types of funds applied for and the specified uses of these funds. For example, the mayor of the City of Chicago has made clear that, excuse me, has made clear to city departments and agencies that jobs are not just a priority, but the priority, as the mayor has indicated that he expects to create at least 16,000 jobs with the city's stimulus funds. In terms of the City of Los Angeles-
He has a specific goal of the number of jobs he wants to create?
Yes, he said he would like to create 16,000-
Do we have a specific goal?
We do not.
Okay.
And in terms of the City of Los Angeles process thus far, since March, each ARA work group that's under the current jurisdiction of the, or, excuse me, is under the direction of the mayor's office, has looked at grant opportunities and has structured their projects based on the council's guiding principles. And these guiding principles were adopted by the city council on April 7th of 2009. Since there are 13 guiding principles, of which job creation and retention-
Thirteen?
Thirteen, of which job creation and retention is one of them, the focus of the work groups has been on all of these principles as opposed to a specific focus on jobs. As it appears that the motion expresses some concern for the increasing, for, number one, increasing the number of jobs created by the acquisition of stimulus funding, and number two, expediting the time in which it has taken to increase the number of jobs, we would preliminarily recommend that a formal policy decision be made by motion or resolution relative to making job creation and retention the main priority in assessing city projects eligible for Recovery Act funding. Additionally, we would preliminarily recommend that, in addition to the jobs committee hearings with general managers of each department, that the mayor's office and the CAO's office be requested to implement the working group in the CAO's office, which has been referred to as the Tiger Team, to meet with the departments individually to discuss planned details of the administration of their grant funds.
Tell me more about the Tiger Group.
The Tiger Team, and I know the CAO's office can attest more so to this, but the Tiger Team is something that they have proposed if we can get the half percent of the ARA grant funds for administration purposes-
Uh-huh.
-to meet with the departments regularly, either biweekly or monthly, to discuss the planned administration of their grant funds that they've received to date, as well as what they're doing to maximize the jobs pieces in each of the projects that have been awarded.
Okay. If we, so we don't have a Tiger Team?
We do not currently have one.
Okay. And the Tiger Team would be comprised of existing analysts, right?
Correct. Or if we were to get the half percent to bulk up the number of jobs-
I'm wondering, why do we need the money to put this coordination together?
I think probably the CAO's office is more equipped-
I know, I anticipate that, so I'm putting the question out there, because it seems to me that it's, in fact, I introduced a motion that the budget analysts, and it was approved by the council, that budget analysts do an assessment of their responsibilities. So it seems to me that one of them should be that they come together and coordinate their efforts. Okay, go ahead.
Um-
By the way, how old are you? You must get this a lot.
Yeah, I'm 25.
Hey, you're very, I thought that you were some super high school student and-
Yeah, I've gotten that I look 17 before.
But you're doing a good job, don't stop now.
So just in addition to the Tiger Team, and as well as making a policy, or considering making a policy decision by motion or resolution relative to making job creation the, job creation and retention the priority for stimulus funds and project consideration for grant applications, we believe that this would be a very good way of addressing the issue of not creating jobs henceforth, of being able to create jobs with more of the grant projects and applications that come forward to council.
Do you think that the 13 principles sort of confuses general managers? Or not confuses them so much as it gives them too much flexibility to squeeze in maybe a favored project from years past that isn't necessarily in line with today's economy and our needs?
Well, it does give the departments a lot of flexibility in determining which projects go forth. And I think that when you hear Jim Clark say that his job is to apply for as many grant funds as there are, he gets this because of these 13 principles that are so kind of widely focused. So if there was some decision that was made to more narrowly focus on what the intended purposes of our applications are for the stimulus funds, then perhaps that would decrease the amount of flexibility.
Well, let me give you an example. F ensures accountability. Why wouldn't we just assume that? I mean, why would we have to state that as a principle? I don't, I mean, we should, all the work that we do at the city should be held accountable. And, but, but, so it's not as if any of these are bad, per se. But the job issue should, I think, should be set aside, and it should be, all these other things should be secondary principles to job creation. So that when you say supports local small businesses, you're saying, well, okay, how many jobs did we create? Advances existing goals and policies established by the mayor and council. Well, see, I just, I, some of this is very ambiguous, and I just don't understand why we need it. It's obvious they want to, it's obvious, just by the fact that we've established a policy means that the application should be consistent with that. Builds infrastructure in the city's older communities for future investment. Again, can we talk about job creation? Provides highest degree of transparency. Okay. Again, I think that's secondary to, readiness is an interesting one, because we felt that the Obama administration was going to be keen on readiness, and it doesn't seem that they're as, that they have their pencils as sharp as our pencils were, or at least our thinking were. So I'm not saying that we should, maybe we should have two categories of priorities. But jobs should be number one, given the condition that we're in. You were saying the other jurisdiction, you talked about Chicago, but you didn't go into detail about what it is, you talked about some differences between Chicago and us in terms of their applications. Can you expound on that a little bit?
Right, I'll try my best. We haven't done extensive research, but from our preliminary research, we found that he, that the mayor of Chicago has not only put this on his website, but he's also produced memos to all department agencies and city departments stating that jobs are to be the priority in determining which projects go forth for which grant application.
Can I ask you, of the 16,000, how many have they covered?
According to the City of Chicago's website, they currently have covered 8,000 jobs.
8,000. Any of those city jobs retained?
They're both created and retained.
Do you know how many were retained?
I don't, I don't have that in-
Now, these would be theoretically positions that would be laid off, or?
Under, yes, for the retained, for the retained positions, they would be positions that would be laid off.
Now, we're talking that we're 1,000 short. It seems to me, if these other jurisdictions are creating, I've got to believe that of the 8,000, that at least 1,000 of those are retained jobs, that we could retain here. So if our goal is 1,000, it seems to me we could factor this into our budget, that, in other words, we have the additional ERIP. The mayor has, actually, I introduced a motion, but the council did not agree with it, but it appears in the mayor's executive directive that he agrees that the 363, I think it is, should be allowed to get their early retirement. So that's 363. Then we had about, what was it, 300 for, in proprietary and special fund opportunities? How many was it? Does anybody know?
Who said 306?
Was it 306?
The mayor said 360.
So who has dyslexia? I thought it was, you know, that was my confusion, because I was, I thought it was less than that. So let's, it grows, though, as they do further analysis as things change, so let's hope the mayor's right. But then I think we should have a third category, which is ARA, retained jobs, and we should set a goal. And I see no reason why that goal shouldn't be 1,000. Given our experience, however, even if we tailored it to 500, we would get the 1,000. But we have to get the general managers in line with that 500. You gotta create 500 jobs, and we have to be successful, so they have to be significant, they have to be quality applications. In terms of the, if we took the Chicago model, what might be a reasonable, I think, maybe when you come back, and I don't think we can wait 30 days, I think we need to get going. So I'm gonna ask you to come back, maybe, when's the next meeting?
Two weeks, 2/23.
So let's say 2/23, with whatever you have, and we'll continue this, but the, we should try to hone in on how many jobs we think we can create, and let's come up with a real figure, whether it's 10,000 or less. But if, I think by doing that, the general managers will get it. I mean, they will get it, and I think they will respond positively, but we have to send them a clear message that that's our top priority. And we haven't done that, quite frankly, we haven't done that. We've sort of been allowing them to do their thing based on all these other principles. And the one example I would use is the libraries example where that was a, I think it was $2 million?
Huh? Seven.
Seven, excuse me, seven, $7 million grant, and they were only creating one job. I mean, that's, and there's, they should have been creating some jobs with that grant, and there was nothing that prohibited them in the application from creating jobs, or retaining existing library jobs. So we won't have to, what good is it, we get this grant, now we have to lay off librarians? That's counterintuitive. So, okay, what else, anything else that you want to offer?
We have nothing more at this time.
Okay, then I would like us to send directly to the council a recommendation to set aside job creation and retention as the top priority, set apart from all the other principles, that all other principles are secondary to job creation. And I'd like to get the feedback, maybe the CAO can step forward and give us some feedback real quick as to whether that's... You've heard the discussion, why don't you just give us your thoughts on it?
Bill Kreis with the CAO's office, let me preface this by saying that Chris and I graduated from high school at the same time. I am also 25. Only kidding here. I'm 26, actually.
Thank you for clarifying that you were only kidding.
You've had more stressful years than one.
It's, you look like him at the beginning of the ARA grant.
That's, you took the words out of my mouth, yes. Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Krikorian, I think we can work on the, on the-
Let's take it piece by piece. So first of all, if we set aside job creation, will that help you with the general managers in getting them to focus on job creation as a top priority?
Well, I certainly think it will, yes.
And would it have changed, if we could, in hindsight, would it have changed how they wrote the grant application?
You know, to that question, I would probably say in retrospect it would not have, or not significantly, and I'll tell you why.
Not significantly?
Not significantly. Possibly it could have to some, I mean, obviously-
The significance is relative, depending on whether you're one of the laid off employees, or whether you're an administrator from on high. The point is that even if, in that library grant, for example, they could have easily created 25 jobs. 25 librarian jobs go a long way, and that would be significant to me. But to create one, they could have easily doubled the number.
To two, yeah.
Yeah. No, but I mean, seriously, I think they could have created outreach workers in every site that essentially are retaining librarian jobs.
There's one thing we might want to bring to bear on this. Again, the grants are a combination of formula and competitive formula-
Right, I understand.
You know, that's sort of fixed, if you will, by definition. With respect to competitive, though, we are up against a number of other municipalities in the United States. Practically every grant has been oversubscribed, in some cases 50 to one in oversubscription. So what I'm thinking of is, to the extent, and we don't-
The federal government, when they're looking at Chicago's application for library grants, and they see that they're creating 500 jobs, and then they look at ours and we're creating one job, you know, I just happen to feel they're gonna pick Chicago.
Well, that may be the case. However, in this case, it seems to be just the opposite using that example. We got $7.56 million from the federal government for BTOP, is what that was called, or LA CAN. We actually got the highest amount of money in the entire nation in terms of municipal governments, exceeded only by, I believe, one of the counties, much larger, Back East. So evidently, in terms of the award criteria or the review criteria-
They did, yes.
-the city, it possibly even helped us, because recently I did hear the president say he's gonna start focusing on jobs. Possibly by definition, that means maybe jobs weren't the highest priority prior to this, and there were those five, those five evaluation criteria that Chris brought up-
Principles.
-here. So, I'm sorry, principles, right? And those were built into the legislation. So the reason I said significantly is, again, that is a value judgment, it's very subjective. On the other hand, it's an estimate by me to say that because it's competitive, it's possible, and we don't know the scoring criteria, we don't get information back, feedback from the federal agencies-
But I have to, going to those principles-
Yes.
-three of them directly address what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Three out of five, preserving and creating jobs.
Yes.
The third one, stabilizing state and local government budgets, I mean, that's job retention. And then helping those most impacted by the recession-
Yes.
-which would be laid off government employees.
Absolutely, yes.
The other two, you know, investing in transportation, environment protection, and infrastructure that will provide long-term benefits, they will also create job retention. They're not, that one is not separate and apart, it's just not as direct.
That's true.
And then providing investments to increase economic efficiency, you know, that can apply to anything. But the three are clearly directly related.
That is true.
All right.
But, but Mr. Alarcon, possibly I could circle back around without confusing things, circle back around and say that I could probably talk a little bit more on those, but the bottom line is, I think going forward, we can emphasize jobs with the general manager, and we've certainly been trying to do that. Mr. Garcetti directed me to do that about four or five weeks ago, and we have been trying to communicate with the departments the importance of job creation. Some applications and some projects simply are not labor-intensive. For example, there are a lot of environmental items or awards for the Port of Los Angeles, and they are to replace diesel particulate generating equipment with clean equipment. So the purchase of that equipment, the installation of that equipment is not necessarily job retentive or job creation, there's not much emphasis on job creation. There may be for Caterpillar or some Cummins Engine Company, but not directly in terms of city jobs. So some of the awards or the grant-
Is there, is there a way that somebody tracks on a daily basis the number of jobs created?
You know, we're tracking that on a monthly basis with the departments, not on a daily basis. That may be a little frequent, depending on the type of project, but we're capturing that information on a monthly basis, yes.
Well, I mean-
Or the departments are, certainly, but not at our level.
Why can't one person stay on it? So like, if the mayor wants to know at 5 o'clock that day, how many jobs we create today?
Well, we could, I suppose we could set that up, certainly. Certainly.
Okay, now with regard to, it seems, yeah, it seems to me that all we have to do is get a general manager. When a job is created, when you hire somebody, or when you retain somebody, or sign them to this special fund, then just call us, let us know.
That's possible. However, the way the federal government changed the job creation, job retention calculations, they're going with hours now, hours paid for by ARA. So it's not necessarily an individual person or a head count or even an FTE now, it's ARA-financed hours. So those are aggregated-
Full-time equivalent?
Well, yes, it aggregates to a full-time equivalent, that's correct.
Okay.
But you'll see on some of the spreadsheets we have, we show 3.08 people, 5.16 people, because it's based on the-
Look, all I'm trying to accomplish here is that the general managers understand the goal of creating jobs.
Absolutely.
That it's crystal clear, and if you do that on a frequent basis, they're more likely to understand that. They get money, let's say, the library department gets their money, how many jobs do they create with that? This week, let's say. And if they can't tell you, then they're not really focused on it, and we want to know when those jobs are being created, when, immediately, because we don't have, this grant has term limits, I mean, it's gonna end.
Yeah, that's true, yes.
We gotta, we gotta make sure we get as much out of it.
Yes.
Also, with regard to the Tiger Team-
Yes.
-you heard my question, why couldn't we establish a Tiger Team with budget analysts right now?
Well, right now, I have to say, the city, if I could go back-
And I, look, and you know, I support the administrative dollars.
Yes.
That's not a question.
Yes.
So be happy to support that, but why do we have to wait for the money before we can create a Tiger Team?
Well, what we've done is, I might add to, and I could probably go into a little more detail, maybe when I come back again, when we have more time, we could talk a little bit about that. But what I'd like to say is, right now, the CAO's office, who is managing this on behalf of the city and the mayor and the council, we are facing staff reductions, we have people leaving on ERIP, we have furloughs, they're, the budget analyst workload is very, very significant. In fact, it's, I've been in that office 10 years, and it's the greatest I've ever seen in my 10 years there. I think it's actually getting worse as the days and weeks go by. Also, there's a subject matter expertise that goes along with ARA. It's a very complex program. So to take, I'm not speaking for the general, for the CAO, I'm speaking just for myself here, my recent experience doing this and managing projects. To divert a budget analyst too much from the core responsibility of our office, which is budget, I think would be very difficult to do.
Okay, so how would the money help?
What the money does-
Do we create additional positions?
Right. Let me step back one minute to say that we have been funding the ARA team out of our salary account since I started March 5th.
Okay.
We were not budgeted for any of this, so it's taken away from our salary account. So to continue at the level that we're doing, which is actually quite a minimal level of management, we've been trying to do this with, you know, very, on a lean staff, I don't think that we have the budget for that, to do that. However, the 0.5% off of every grant, and I'm gonna bring you a report, you know, in the ad hoc committee on this that we've talked about, that will give us the financing to pay for myself and CAO analysts, and to beef up the team a little bit so that we can do this. Without that, we are running a salaries deficit in our office.
Okay, so how many people are we talking about in this Tiger Team?
You know, the, I don't have the report in front of me, and it is with the front office for review.
Does this still, you know how many positions we're talking about?
I think we're looking at five or six FTEs.
Five or six, now these would be, are these existing budget analysts, or?
Well-
These are people who would otherwise be laid off, or what?
Well, it would be someone like myself, it would be other ARA team members that you see in the ad hoc committee, and it would also be-
Would these be positions retained?
Yes, there would be some of those in our office, too.
And if they're not retained, where are they going?
That I don't know.
No, I mean, are they gonna be laid off?
I believe so.
So how many did the-
Or moved to another department, possibly.
Can I ask, I don't know if this is an employee relations thing, but, well, it was in the LA Times, so I don't see why it should be, but how many in the CAO's office were being recommended for layoff?
I'm not directly involved with that, but I have heard five.
Was it only five? It was only five? Okay, so theoretically, those five would be saved with the 5%?
I suppose it would be up to the front office because of the skill set and the, basically the subject matter expertise, it's a-
But you might hire a personnel analyst or something?
That's possible, yes, absolutely.
Okay, could we drill down a little bit on what the Tiger Team would be comprised of?
Yes.
And come back in two weeks with a more specific recommendation? I'm gonna, but I am gonna move forward with two recommendations. One, that we, that we set aside the jobs creation aspect of the principles as a separate universal principle, and that all others are secondary to that. Secondly, I would recommend that the CAO come back with a specific report in two weeks as to the creation of the Tiger Team, and that we encourage the creation of the Tiger Team. And the CLA will help explain what the Tiger Team is as we send the report on to council. And I actually think those things will go very well. If there's any way to come back with a temporary, you know, sort of expanded beyond you, you know, even if it's one position that can be borrowed for a while-
Yes.
-I think that'll, every little bit will help. It splits up the number of departments you have to work with, or the number of budget analysts you have to hound.
That's true.
So if that meets with your approval, did you have any comments with this section?
Very briefly, just in changing our list of principles to make sure that jobs is identified clearly as the number one priority, which it should be, I fully agree with that. I just want to make sure that as we do the drafting of that, that we not make accountability and transparency and things like that appear to be of secondary importance-
No, I am.
What we need to do, I think, is, no, well, I think not. I think what your comments earlier were, were clear that those should be prerequisites, that those are givens.
Right.
But the first priority of focus of the principles should be in job creation. So I think we just need to make sure that that's clear.
Well, I want to set the jobs aside from the principles, the top principle would be job creation, and then all the other principles would be supplemental to that. They all, they all work, but I can see how a general manager can read that and get really confused. And some, as you go down the line, somebody might try to fix a particular problem in their interest as opposed to job creation, like buying a piece of equipment instead of investing in a job. Right now is not the time to buy, particularly- Right now is not the time to buy, particularly, well, anyway, that's a different.
Certainly, it should be clear that, that anything that isn't producing jobs is not a priority, definitely.
Great. I, oh, the other thing, I want to make it clear in that, in, in the job creation principle that, that we emphasize job retention for city employees. Because it, it seems to me we're not really clued into that. That is a way for us to avoid layoffs. Every job we retain is a job we don't have to lay off. And, and it seems to me, thousand, sounds like a lot when you're reading the LA Times. But when you look at it in the context of what other jurisdictions are doing with their ARA dollars, it doesn't, it, it, it's not that much. And I, I think we can, we can certainly help our situation. I still believe we can avoid layoffs. But, but I think we've got to make sure that ARA is, that we're using it much more effectively. This will give us two years, if, if not more. So, and hopefully by then, we'll, we'll begin to see a, a growth in, in the economy. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Good job, good job both of you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, for clarity, at public record, principles, this refers to, we only have a motion here. It's not in the motion, but principles you're referring to.
Yeah, it's, the following prin, these principles were adopted by the city council. It's file number 090648.
Very good.
Does that help?
That, it helps me.
So we, we want to modify this to emphasize job creation. The CLA will, will work with you on that. And my office will also work with you on the language, so.
Mr. Alakon, those are also up on the LA Recovery website. If you want to just go there, they're all articulated.
Yeah, but he just needs it for clerking.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he needed the file. All right, thanks. Okay, we're going to move forward very quickly with DWP. Mr. Freeman.
Morning.
Hi.
For the record, I'm older than your last two witnesses put together.
I could say so many things, but I won't go there, man. Go ahead. We, we want to talk about the number of dollars DWP has applied for and the various grants.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a report?
There, there is a written report, but I think the information I'm about to give you is not in the report.
Okay.
We applied for $500 million worth of grants. We were successful for 20% of that. We have received $100 million worth of grants, and we have pending another 100 million. We've applied for everything in any way connected with water or power.
So you've received, you've been approved for 100 million?
We, yes.
Were the four, the other 400 million disapproved?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we've got, with 100 million we've got, is that one grant? Or how many grants does that represent?
It's essentially two. One for our water system, and then we got the largest smart grid grant of any municipality in the country, $60 million. And we don't have the money yet, but.
Okay, how, tell me about job creation with those grants.
Well, we're going to maximize that. I don't, I get it. I mean, I don't need to read any papers or anything. This city is in a, the crisis of its lifetime with unemployment. We, we, we're focusing like a laser beam on using all the money we have for jobs. I don't need any advice from the CAO or anyone else.
Let's talk about these specific grants. I'm going to, I'm going to go quickly because I have two other general managers coming up. But with regard to the, the 100 million, are these new jobs created? Are they jobs in DWP already?
The water side would be jobs that are in DWP already, and we just get reimbursed for the work. But it's job retention. The smart grid.
It's not job retention, really. I mean, you weren't going to lay these people off.
No, we wouldn't, but it's additional work.
DWP's not going to see any layoffs, so we can't talk about job retention. The only way it would be retention is if it, if it creates a new slot and we move a city employee into it.
It's, it's work that we couldn't otherwise afford, so it's additional jobs indirectly. But the smart grid is yet.
No, 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 no. It's additional work, but it's not additional jobs, because you're not going to lay anybody off.
No, sir, but.
So what I'm talking about in terms of creating jobs, it would be a job that either we farm out to the private sector and create jobs out there with, with a contract, or jobs that we move city employees into.
Yes, sir. And we have moved 1,400 people off the general payroll to DWP over the last four years.
I'm talking about these grants. Can we focus on ARA? I just want to get to the 100 million dollars. How many of those jobs would create slots that we could move city employees into or contract out to the private sector?
The 60 million is new money. We will have to match it with 60 million of our own in order to get the money. So there's 120 million dollars.
But, but we, we match it with existing resources, right?
With money, yes, sir.
With cash or with, with jobs?
Probably mostly cash, because it's going to be very new work. The whole smart grid is.
Yeah, but DWP is, is, is okay. We're not worried about, what we, what we are worried about is laying off city employees.
I'm aware of that, yes.
So the new, the job slots that you can create with these grants, can, we can move city employees into those slots?
We can move a number of them.
Those five CAO folks can.
But, but I'm, I'm working with City Hall to try to do a whole lot more than that. We have a workforce of 9,800. We have a lot of contracts.
Can we focus on these grants?
Yes, sir.
I, I know you want to talk about all the wonderful things you're doing. I just want to focus on ARA. That's the purpose of this meeting.
We, we have $16 million in grants. We're, we're negotiating exactly how we spend money. There are guidelines, so we're, we don't have a complete free hand. But we are going to try to create as many jobs as we can. We think that we can create a couple of hundred new jobs total with our grant money.
Okay, how much of that would, would be available for city employees versus private?
Well, we would give a high priority to city employees like we do generally, so that to the extent that the skills are available, I think, you know, I would have to guess now, but I would imagine about half the jobs.
Okay, who's the, who's the budget analyst at DWP? You? Okay, can you, can you come forward? Is, is there a way that you can, you can help hone in on this with, with the department? So that we can, so that we can maximize the opportunities to avoid layoffs?
The jobs are fairly technical until we actually have the program laid out. I can't give you a precise number.
I understand. I'm not asking for a precise number. I, I, I'll ask you to, to give us that in two weeks, but I'm not asking.
Olivia Seves Valunga with the city administrative office. I'm sure that I can work with Mr. Freeman and Joe Avila, who's been involved in the program.
I don't want to diminish, I don't want to diminish the quality of this project. I want it to be successful. But I want us to maximize the, the job retention for city employees, because I don't want to see any layoffs. And that's, that's the purpose of this meeting, so.
Yeah, we could look at whatever engineering jobs or.
Do you know how many jobs were proposed with this, with these two grants?
Well, the number of jobs were, are not identified in, in, in the grant.
Really?
Because it's highly, the whole smart grid thing is, is Councilman Krikorian, I think, is well aware, is new technology. And, and until we hammer out the exact details, it also involves some of the universities in the neighborhood, they will be involved. And I, I'm not, I'm trying to answer your question as best I can. We think that we will end up between the water and the other grants with approximately 200 jobs. So that's just a rough estimate.
Okay, so I, I, these questions should have been asked, you know, three, four months ago when you started looking at this thing. That's, I recognize that. But now we have an opportunity to sort of work with the flow and try to drill down. How many can we create to save jobs for the city?
At the time that this proposal was put through to the, to the feds, the department identified 500 public outside the city jobs.
500?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that on one grant or two?
That was on the smart grid.
So that's 60 million?
Yes, 60 million.
That's just the 60 million? So you, you said, you told the federal government we were going to create 500 jobs?
I, I'm not.
Through contract or whatever?
Yeah. I don't want, I want this, I want this to be a quality grant, which means I want you to meet everything you promised the federal government. And I, I want us, in addition, to hone in on how many of those 500 jobs we can, we can dedicate to the city.
I, I just want to make sure we're not sitting here and overpromising, because you're very serious about this. And I don't want to, this leads you to the fact that they put 500 jobs in a paper some month ago.
Is there some reason that that's 500?
It was their application.
Now, the 500 applies to the investment program. We did not win that one. There was a $200 million application. We did not win that one. Yeah, I know. It's smart grid investment program, 2, 500 jobs. That's not the, the demonstration project is the one that we won, Councilmember.
And, and there was no listing of how many jobs?
Yes, 200 is.
Oh, so it was 200, okay.
I'm sorry, he gave me the wrong information.
Oh.
They're named the same, 175.
I apologize.
Okay, look at, look at, we, we've had a very good discussion. This is the way I want the discussion to go. We have two more general managers. So what, what I'd like, I mean, to the, to the full extent possible, David, remember, we're trying to save families' primary breadwinner's job. That's what we're trying to do. And I know you're sensitive to that, I know it. So I would like to know how many of the 200 jobs, I mean, you're going to have to go job by job theoretically, I mean, and see if the skill sets exist in the city. But I'm sure a number of them do, whether it's 10% or 70%. I'm sure we, we've, like, I don't know what these grid workers are going to be doing. But what I'd like you to do is, is come back to us with a figure that says, hey, you know what? We can, we can, you know, do 50 for this. We can dedicate 50 so that we can reduce that thousand number.
Yeah, and we have some other grants in the, in the middle for energy efficiency, which is very job-intensive right here in town.
Okay, so I would like you to, moving forward on any new grants you apply for, bear that in mind. And the CAO is here, too. They'll work with you, because we've asked all budget analysts to do an assessment of ARA from, from their departments. But, but working together, my specific goal is to prevent layoffs for the city. And, and I, you know, you've been very successful. So that was just one grant. I don't know how many you promised on the other grant. Do you know off the top of your head, the 40 million?
The water, so that's not job-intensive.
No, no, that's, that's very infrastructure. They're for pipeline replacement, so it's less, it's more.
But who's going to do the work?
Water and power employees.
Existing?
Existing, sir.
Existing, so we're not.
It's preserving those jobs for those particular projects that wouldn't have gone forward.
There's no opportunity to create slots for existing city employees?
We're in negotiations from what I understand. We're trying to maximize the opportunity. But right now, it's at least six confirmed, and then we're going to look at some additional.
So that's already submitted? That's part of the 300 figure?
That was part of our original app, 200, sir.
No, the 306 or 360 figure?
No, I don't know about that.
No, I don't think they've been identified.
Okay, then, then, yeah, we, we all got to get on the same page, okay? And, because that's how we're going to save these jobs, you know, five at a time, even one at a time, because it means a family.
We've gotten very clear direction from Mr. Freeman. The job creation is our number one priority.
Great.
And over and above that, we're going to substitute employees for contractors.
Yeah, I, to the extent you can, without upsetting the quality or, or efficiency and effectiveness of the grant, I understand that. But I believe we can get there. If all the departments are looking at their ARA money, I think we can create 500 jobs. Remember, we have more grants to apply for in, in the upcoming year. So, so I appreciate that. By the way, do you know when the money's coming?
Not yet. I think in March, we're expecting these 60 million negotiations to conclude.
Okay, when do you expect to start creating jobs?
Probably late, late March, early April, when negotiations.
So if we could, I would ask the budget analyst if you could get an assessment of, you know, how much we might save this year in this.
Sounds like.
We, we got to be very careful with this, because I, the last thing I want to do is, is say that we, we effectuated a, a, a job saving, and then we don't, and it hits us doubly next year. So, so we, I want to do a good job, okay? Thank you very much. Good job, thank you. Okay, the next group is environmental affairs. So we got to, we got to, we got to save jobs just to save the department?
Yes, we do. Beth Jines, Assistant General Manager of Environmental Affairs. And along with me is Gretchen Hardison, who's our Director of Climate Change and Air Quality Division, and Craig Tranby, one of our senior scientists.
By the way, are, how many of your, how many employees do you have?
28.
28. How many are civil service?
28.
All 28?
Mm-hmm.
They're, they've all taken a test?
Yes, with the exception of the general manager and the assistant general manager. So I guess that would be 27, 6.
But are you a civil servant?
No, I'm exempt.
Okay, okay. So we're trying to save 26 jobs?
Correct. So we are.
Well, the other two as well, but.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Environmental Affairs is the lead for the $37 million in direct formula ARA funding under the Department of Energy's Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program.
Now, that's interesting. So, and what is, what is that for?
It's for energy efficiency and conservation programs.
Okay, and is that like weatherization stuff?
It's a, it's a series of programs. And what we did was, we did nine outreach meetings around the communities and got some input from folks on what they thought were like, were preferable priorities for this.
We don't have a lot of time. I got to get to council. I just want to know what kinds of jobs are, are the, how many jobs are committed?
Well, currently, we have, using the energy efficiency, or the energy department's calculator, we have, are estimating that 403 jobs will result from.
And how many of those are in the private sector?
Most.
Yeah.
So 204?
Well, this is a calculator that the DOE provides.
Let's, let's ask a, a different question. How many of those are city jobs? Or could be?
About 12 to 15, we estimate.
12 to 15 jobs in administration and program management for each of the 15, 16 program areas under this grant. We understand that through the municipal building retrofit portion of the grant, that there will be a number of hiring hall jobs. We're hoping to stimulate jobs in the private sector as well in, in building energy.
Now, this department was, let's see, I don't, could the CAO, well, who, is there anybody from the CAO that worked on the layoff proposals? What, what I'm trying to get at is, when the CAO recommended that this department be eliminated, where did the positions go? Did they, they just have bumping rights? Or were they, were they, were these job slots that are ended? 28 slots?
Eli Novan Sanchez, Office of the CAO. I'm, I'm not sure that I understand your question.
The CAO recommended that we eliminate this department. Where did the jobs go? Are they eliminated? Or are they, are they going into slots for, in their current capacity for what they're doing?
The five positions, actually, the proposal was to consolidate EAD. And the five positions would, if there were city jobs that were available for the Personnel Department, for those people to go, and actually, those individuals to go, and then, of course, that they would go there.
So it's the elimination of slots? 28 slots?
Is the elimination of positions and whether or not the employees would be unemployed would be depending on their bumping rights and where they would go in the city.
But, but it's part of the thousand?
Yes, it is part of the thousand.
So if, now, did you contemplate the fact that they've already received a grant? And those, and the positions, the grant was funding positions in the department? So.
Patty Huber with the CAO.
Could you raise the mic, please?
Sure. I'm sorry, I do have soft voice. Patty Huber with the CAO. Of the 28 positions, the majority were being transferred to other departments to continue environmental activities in the city.
But they were going into existing slots? They're not? not-
No, the actual EAD positions, the functions were being transferred with the position, so-
Okay, okay, that's, that's exactly what I wanted to-
So the ones going to planning, those would have been additional positions in planning, not taking existing planning spots.
Okay, okay, right, okay. So you said half?
The net was, out of the 28, only five were being eliminated in total. The rest, the 23, were being transferred to other city departments as function.
They're just being repositioned. So, now, okay, so then we would still receive the grant. How, how many of those positions were gonna be funded by ARA? I've got to assume that the General Manager's position was funded.
By ARA?
Yeah, some percentage.
All of the positions, we had submitted a spreadsheet to the CIO several weeks before the eliminations occurred, that outlined how we were going to be funding multiple staff, including the General Manager, the Assistant General Manager, and the managers using-
So, particularly given the way the, the CIO said that they're looking at essentially full-time equivalents, or they're, they're doing hours, then the dollars that you received in these grants could be calculated in terms of hours that we would be retaining employees.
Correct.
Do you have that calculation?
We do. I don't have it with me here today, but we do.
Okay, I'd like to see it. I did a big department, now I'm doing a small department, DWP's clearly a different animal, but I, I just want to get everybody in the sense of how can we save these laid-off jobs with ARA dollars? That, that's what I'm trying to get at. So, if we were not going to eliminate these, here's the difficulty with your department, quite frankly. The tension is, or the, the question, the consternation evolves around whether philosophically we need an entire department, or whether we can perform equivalent functions outside. That's, that's a policy consideration for the council and the mayor. I have my own opinion on it, but, you know, there's two paths that we could go down. So we need to do this assessment in, in the context of both paths. Okay, so if, if we, if we retain the department, how many jobs can we retain with ARA dollars? If we don't retain the department, what, it's, it's sort of interesting, do you, so, so we've done an application, the General Manager gets 1% or something, you know, whatever the calculation is. If the General Manager no longer exists, what happens to the 1%?
That could be spread through, through the rest of-
So they could give it to a half a percent to the General Manager of Planning?
Right.
Theoretically. Whoever supervises that group that goes over there, if, if that's part of the grant. Very complicated, but, but if we're going to get to the number of jobs saved, even though you're a small department, if we can save five jobs, it might change opinions.
Well, in, in the, the recommendations from the CIO, it also transfers the ARA funding with two positions to the Community Development Department.
No, I, I know, they try, they, they did it, they sliced it up in a lot of different ways, but the point I'm trying to make is, we still want to save those five jobs, and the question is, can we, can we use these ARA dollars to create new city slots, or support these slots that were going to be cut?
We can, and that was the, the spreadsheet that we had sent to the CIO before we, we received the report, that, that laid out, we get a lot of grant funding, in fact.
Okay.
We're mostly grant-funded, we only have about $500,000 of a budget that is on general funding.
I, I understand, I remember your presentation to council.
So we have a spreadsheet that lays that all out, how everyone can be funded.
With outside dollars?
Yes.
Okay. So when we're talking about retaining, we're, we only need to focus on the general fund positions, right?
We would need to focus also on, also on positions-
The problem here is that we've got a policy consideration combined with, with a budget crisis, and, and we're, and they don't necessarily, they're not necessarily aligned. We might be able to solve the budget issues with grant funding, but that's still, there's still the policy question lingering about whether we want to retain this department. So we need to understand both sides of this equation. But I'm thinking, if we can save the jobs, then maybe we can defer the policy consideration, because we have other priorities, like saving money elsewhere. But anyway, so I'm, I'm talking to the CIO because, you're, so you're the budget analyst for EAD?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so, so I'm talking to you primarily. If you could work with a department, and, and give me that kind of analysis of both paths, and, and David, you did the report, right? Yeah, I, I know you're trying to hide back there, but you don't have to come, you don't have to come up, but I, what I want is both. David, don't come up.
Okay.
Don't come up, because I gotta go. We got one more department. But, at the end of the day, what we want to do is not lay off workers, if we can find outside, non-general fund money. That's, that's what we're trying to accomplish, okay? This department, there's only five, and it seems to me we might be, we can find reserve money, we can, but, but we don't want to do that. We want to find either positions in proprietary departments, but in this case, I'm focused on ARA. How can we take ARA dollars and save those jobs? Okay? If we make the policy decision, you know, you know, which I, I'm opposed to, but if, if it goes in that direction, that's a different way to look at it. But I want the budget analyst to work with the department to come up with both perspectives, both, not perspectives, but both options. In terms of, with, and on both tracks, we're trying to minimize the layoffs. Okay? Thank you. I, I really think that if the mayor wants to eliminate the department, that's, that's an entirely separate conversation from the layoffs. And, and, you know, that's, that's a discussion that we should have with the department. But if we, if we find a way to save the jobs, then it changes the discussion about, about the department. I happen to think this is a revenue generating department, and, and I don't, and, and I think there's gonna be more revenue generated, more revenue opportunities down the road, particularly with the Obama administration talking about greening and everything, and we need the synergy of the collective of 28 employees to be able to maximize those grants. Otherwise, you're gonna have three people in planning that don't know what, what two people in CDD are doing, and we may not maximize the opportunities for grantsmanship. So I, I really think that should be our goal. That's my personal opinion, and obviously, others, others have other opinions, but my goal is, is, is twofold. Save the jobs, and then, if, 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 if my theory is correct, then we will get more money in ARA dollars and other greening dollars from the federal government that, that will help us in other categories. I'm gonna move forward, but, but actually, I would like for you to work with my staff to give them the information that, that, that we need. I don't want to have to have you make another presentation, but I do want you to work with my staff to get me those numbers, and see what we can do to save, save jobs. Any questions? Any answers? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the last department is LEHD. We're gonna go very quickly, I gotta get to council. You've been here, what, 60 days? You got it all figured out?
Not that long, this is my fifth week, but I'm no longer new.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm Doug Guthrie, I'm the, the GM for the Housing Department.
Okay, so you've applied, tell, tell us about the ARA dollars you've received.
Well, we, we have four different grants that we've received, the largest of which is fairly recently, it's Neighborhood Stabilization Program Two, of which we were awarded $100 million.
Okay.
And that's over a three-year period of time. We've yet to receive the grant award from HUD, but we're currently working on how we're going to staff this operation, so that's still work in progress.
So is there an opportunity to save city jobs there?
Well, there is. There, there, I expect that there will be some specific positions that will be funded by this, it will be a new position, so within our department. We haven't really settled on what that number is.
Was there a layoff number in your department?
There wasn't. We, we actually are filling 55 positions in our department as a result of the recent activities.
Oh, because you're funded? Those positions are wholly grant-funded?
Because we're, we're all special funded at the Housing Department, so we're actively trying to fill those positions that have been frozen up until this period of time.
Okay. Do you have any ideas of numbers?
Well, for the NSP program, again, I, I would give you a range, but it's likely to be somewhere between 10 and 20 new positions that would be funded operationally.
City?
Within the city, again, it's, it's kind of, depending on how we roll this out, we're also working with a nonprofit that was established specifically to administer this program. So I think, working with them and with the CIO's office, you know, we will very soon be proposing an operational plan for this.
Okay, and I appreciate the commitment to the nonprofit, but we've got to, you know, it's like, the nonprofits are working to save people's houses, and so am I.
Well, there will be new staff positions.
We want city employees to not lose their houses.
We, I understand the message.
Great, okay, tell us, tell us about the other three.
Well, the other three programs include the Homeless Prevention and Rapid Rehousing Program, which was a, a grant award of just over $29 million. That program started in November, is when it began to be implemented. There's, it's resulted in, I believe, one full-time new staff position within the Housing Department. Excuse me, the balance of the jobs that are being created are all in the private sector through the implementation of the program, and that's, that's approximately 40 new positions.
Forty?
Forty positions that are funded outside, right.
For the private nonprofits?
Private and nonprofits, through, through legal aid, through caseworkers, case management, all done through reaching out to keep people out of homelessness.
But there's no city, so just the one?
No, just the one position.
But we are creating jobs in the community?
In the community, yes, within the city of Los Angeles.
Are these full-time jobs?
These are full-time equivalent jobs.
For three years?
Yes, for three-year period of time.
Okay, next?
We've got CD, CDBG Recovery Dollars that have gone into some specific programs here. I don't believe those are creating any staffing jobs, any city staffing jobs. Those funds are going into transit-oriented developments that provided additional leverage that allowed us to win some affordable housing, new developments at the state level, and we, so we've got three new developments that these funds are participating in, that will deliver about 240 housing units, so those show, those should go into construction in March.
Okay, those are creating private sector jobs?
Those are all private sector jobs.
Okay.
But, but it is a significant investment that, that came out of this sort of leverage of these funds.
It's good, it's good.
There are also a couple other smaller programs, again, neither one of which are, are going to be major job creators, and none of which are really funding any city jobs. We also, finally, we've got energy efficiency funds, which are, which are under Environmental Affairs, and so we've got a total of $5.4 million there.
What do you mean, under Environmental Affairs?
Well, they, they are the grant administrator, we're the, Sally, you can explain, we're the sub-grantee, I, I think is, is the right terminology for that.
Yeah.
So we're running the programs, and those will complement both our NSP program that's already in place as well as-
Is that like weatherization stuff, that I mentioned earlier?
No, weatherization is a different ARA program, but I think Water and Power is working on taking over from local grantees that can't, don't have the capacity to put money out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, no, this is for, for example, adding solar panels, white roofs, those kind of things, to some of the houses we're rehabbing through the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and through-
And, well, tell me about the jobs.
Those will be construction jobs, or, I'm, I'm glad to know about a DOE, Department of Energy, job calculator, because we're looking at, well, what, what's the discrete task of putting solar panels, that's not rehab-
Yeah.
-and looking at that. Those will be private sector jobs that will be created.
Is there any way that, that we can squeeze some job retention for city employees?
If, you know, the, I think Environmental, Los Angeles was just notified about the grant, I don't know about the admin funds and whether we would receive any, given their situation, they might want to use the money for their staff to retain them.
Right, but I believe as, as of right now, we really haven't slotted any positions to run this program, we were just gonna administer those under existing staff that we have.
Well, if you could go back through the grants, to see if there's any opportunities, even if it's two, I mean, those two families that, that will stay on the payroll for at least two years, so, in this case, three years, so.
Yeah, the, the major one is really NSP Two, as we put that together.
Well, if you could, if you could talk to the people that are gonna administer these, and see if there's any way that you can refine your goals. Obviously, we want you to be consistent with the grant, but if there's any way that we can create even a few jobs. Now, moving forward, you heard the discussion about focus on job creation, as you write your grants, are you, are you the grant writer?
Yes, I'm Sally Richmond, the Housing Department.
Oh, my God, you've been doing this since I was receiving grants.
Long time.
I think you were my monitor one time.
Ah, I don't know, but we worked on SCAP, creating the Code Enforcement Program together.
Oh, my-
Remember, 12 years ago?
So, so, yeah, and moving forward, if we could, if we could focus on city job creation, retention, essentially, creating special funds for slots. Not to say that we, we're not gonna create private sector jobs, you're in an interesting position, we have a partnership with the, the housing development community, and so we, we recognize that those are good for the community too, but we also have an urgency in, in housing jobs, I mean, in city jobs, that, that we need to save. So if there's any way, if, could you get us a, a number, or could you calculate, even if it's an estimate, just let me know, you know, what kind of estimate it is, a hard estimate, a soft estimate, you know, in terms of the number of jobs that you will create from these grants that could go to city employees?
Yes, we, we can, we can do that.
Great, and then you have other applications in the hopper?
Not right now.
Sally, we don't, we don't at this time, no, we've, we, we need to get these programs up and running, because they're, they're really in the early stages at this point, and they are pretty, pretty significant programs.
We, we don't want to lose opportunities also, so.
I don't think there are any right now. We're, we're going to be actively seeking recapturing of funds that other jurisdictions don't spend, for example, on homelessness prevention. Jurisdictions are supposed to spend 60% of that money within two years, so, not now, but in 2011. HUD may decide, okay, you haven't spent it, we're recapturing it, and there might be an opportunity to apply for that, so we're, we're definitely tracking all of those kind of opportunities.
Okay, we introduced a motion to budget analysts for your department, is the budget analyst here?